Good evening and welcome to the May 6, 2019 Board of Selectmen meeting. We'll begin with signing of the warrant.
So moved.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
I'll make that unanimous. Next, we have approval of minutes, April 22, 2019.
So moved.
With the only correction, Mr. Chairman, is what you made earlier is the chairman should be your name, not mine.
Right.
Mike will second that as well.
And I'll make that unanimous with those changes. Next, we have invitation to speak. Is anybody here that would like to speak? Please. Whatever you like, sitting is just fine. Be comfortable. That's what counts.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Deputy Chief James Falvey from the Milford Police Department. And there's been a lot of discussions about your interim police chief. Although I do know the three of you cordial, I don't think the three of you really know my background as far as my service to the town. I've been on the Milford Police Department for 36 years. I was born and raised in Milford. I attended Milford High, graduated. And I've worked my way up from patrolman, sergeant, 20 years as a lieutenant, and currently as the deputy chief of police. I have attained a master's level in education. I've been to the FBI. I'm a graduate of the N.A. FBI Academy. And I've made a lot of contributions to the police department. I've worked in every aspect there. I've always been successful, had no negative issues throughout my career. I've been, I have a good reputation. There's been no discipline in my, in my background. And I have sent you a letter of interest for the interim's job. And we have a good department. We have a good department. It's running very well. And I think if, I'd like the opportunity for you to believe in me, trust me, give me an opportunity. I think I've earned it. I believe my qualifications are second to none to anyone past the president who may be interested in this position. And you hear all different kinds of rumors, so I wanted to come directly and speak to you and tell you my feelings on it. And, you know, discuss it with my family. And they said, "Go, go talk to them." I don't want to listen to scuttlebutt in the rumors. And I wanted to come here directly and tell you how I feel. I feel that I'm best person suited to take on that responsibility. I know it's a huge responsibility, and I hope by me being here shows that I'm very serious about continuing to be a very successful run department. And if you have any questions for me, or if you want to inquire and look into my background, I welcome, and I would hope you would do that before you make any decisions. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Yeah, we don't have questions, invitation to speak, but I do want to say this from the, speaking from the board. You have impeccable reputation as deputy chief. It makes sense to me that you would like to be interim. And I agree with everything you said, that you are qualified and you have the requisite qualification. So there's no question from my perspective on that. And just, I appreciate you coming here instead of, you know, dealing with rumor mills or any of that, and social media or whatever. That's why I asked that we get clarification on some things, so that individuals like yourself don't get beat up on social media in the process of us vetting people. But I appreciate it.
If you give me the opportunity, I'll continue to be hardworking, as I always was. I've been loyal to all my bosses. I've been loyal to citizens of this community. And I would work hard day and night to make sure that continues.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. Anybody else that would like to speak? Who's not on the agenda? All right, so from there, we'll go to public hearings. And the first, the first one we have is transfer of license and change of manager. And Mrs. Guido? I think most of us are familiar with this, this change. You would like to change from James G. Guido, let's see, doing business as Guido and Sons. Let's see. And the new manager is James E. Guido, your son. We've recently approved this and threw a glitch in the paperwork. We're back here today, but no fault of the applicant at all. So I don't know that there's anything new, any new information.
There's nothing new. You're just looking at it.
It's just a form.
Transfer of license and a change of manager. So we're going to do those two, two separate votes.
We approved this unanimously about a month ago, I think, if not six weeks, maybe?
Not even, yeah.
It was the LLC that you had voted on at the time.
Okay.
We changed the structure, but we did not change the transfer of the license nor the change of manager. So those two things tonight.
Mr. Chairman, just so we can get Mrs. Guido home at a reasonable time, can I make a motion to approve the change of manager? And is it the application for the transfer of license as well?
Yes.
And I would second that as well, Mr. Chairman.
And I would make that unanimous. Good luck, Mary.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Thanks, Ray.
Thank you.
Next, we have a public hearing for Mass Electric and Verizon New England, Inc., Beaver Street, for Plan Number 27569105 is the first one. We'll have two.
Oh, yes.
Okay. But this is the first of the two. Go ahead and let us know what the plan is.
My name's Alec Galvin, design engineer with National Grid. Here as a design representative for the stub poles they're putting in for the widening of the road.
Okay.
Okay. I'm not familiar with how the poles are numbered, so...
Hold on. I'm sorry. I have to, what I'm going to do, because it's a public hearing, anybody here has the right to speak. And actually, generally speaking, you have the right to speak anytime. This is, these are your chairs and your tables. So having said that, what I want to do is hear the application, and then we'll get into questions and, okay? Just as a matter of process. So with that, can you tell us a little bit about your Plan 27569105?
So that is pole 114. Yep, so, well, in both cases.
Yeah, both are.
Yeah, this one here, we're removing a tree guy, which is the new policy. We're trying to get more of those out, because at some point, the trees are going to come down. It could be an issue.
Can you just explain for the benefit of folks that don't understand what a tree guy is? I get it, but...
Yeah, it's a support guy wire. You have your general ones that come off the pole with the yellow alert on them, so people know what they are to, so the poles don't lean over time and cause any stability issues with the, with the service lines. So in this case, whenever we come up with a job, we have, we're looking to remove those for stability long-term and install stub poles. So basically, a smaller pole for the support instead of the wire in this case.
Okay, and that wire...
Generally, it's across the street in this.
And that wire now goes to a tree today?
Yeah, yeah, back...
Okay. So it's a legacy practice, an old practice that was done years ago, and you want to remove those?
Yeah, anytime they needed across the street support, so the pole wouldn't lean over time, drill it right into a big tree.
Big tree.
So, you know, over, as jobs come up, we're removing them as we go. In this case, this was one of those.
All right. And...
Looks like there was a Milford Town Tree Warden that actually requested the tree guy be removed.
Yeah, and that makes sense. All right, I've had the chance to read this, but what I don't know is any correspondence with neighbors and others. What's the standard process here?
They alert, they alert any of the abutting property owners if it affects them.
Okay.
Generally, we try to stay within town limits, so we're just dealing with the town. But if, if, if the support line coming off the new pole we're installing crosses in, we got to get an easement from that landowner to okay that.
Okay, does it? Does it cross over? Does it require an additional easement?
Well, this one here, I think one of them, let me see, there was two of them. There's Pole 89 as well. Let me see. Let's see here. This is, I think it was Pole 89, the other job, says, "We'll now land on private property. We'll need an easement." So shouldn't be in the case of this first one, 114, the job you first mentioned there, but the other one, further down the street.
Okay.
So in that case, they would send out an easement application to seek the approval on that.
All right, so we have a gentleman here who would like to speak relative to this change, I'm hoping, and not the other one. So would you, for the benefit of the minutes, just let us know who you are, sir?
Oh, Edward Dean.
Edward Dean.
Live at 122 Beaver Street.
Okay.
And I was, I don't know how the poles are numbered, so I, I don't know whether I'll be affected or not.
No, according, well, according to the map I have laid out here, it's 122, so you're up near Pole 88.
Oh, okay.
And we're changing out on 89, which is about 150, 200 feet away from you.
All right.
So, and actually, the line looks to be on the opposite side of the street, as you see here.
Oh, okay.
So they're removing a tree guy going across the street. And for added stability, we're going to install a stub pole to support, but it's not even, it's not even on the same side as your property.
Oh, all right.
Yeah.
So the map, I got that same map, but I wasn't sure exactly how it would affect me.
Yeah, see, 100, so we have, it lists 173 feet away from Pole 88, which is in front of your property.
Okay.
So you're looking at a couple hundred feet away.
Mr. Dean, I frequently can't tell from the maps either. This is why we have the discussion. So you're a neighbor of, in any event, to what's happening, and it's just good to get that clarity before, and especially during a public hearing. So no worries. Are, now, are you comfortable? Do you have any other questions?
No, that, that was the only thing. I, I just wanted to know where it was going to be.
Okay.
Whether it would affect, whether it would affect our property or not.
No, it looks to be on the opposite side of the property. And again, if it was going to intrude on anyone's land, they would have let you know or sent some information.
Okay. So I just got that map, and I couldn't figure it out.
Okay.
Okay. So if there's no other questions, is there anybody else that has any questions relative to this public hearing and this guy wire change? Okay, not hearing from anyone. I do want to read the petition just for the purposes, because it is a hearing. Massachusetts Electric Company and Verizon New England, Inc. request permission to erect and maintain poles and wires to be placed thereon together in sustaining and protecting fixtures. As said, companies may deem necessary to be owned and used in common by your petitioners in the following way or ways. And this is Beaver Street, Pole 114-84. National Grid requests per Chuck Renaud, Milford Town Tree Warden that National Grid remove guy wire from existing joint-owned Pole 114, and then install Pole 114-84 32 feet west and 35 feet joint-owned stub pole with an anchor to support existing P-114 Then goes on, the notice goes on. Wherefore, they pray that after due notice and hearing is provided by law, be granted joint or identical locations for the permission to erect and maintain poles, wires, together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as they may find necessary. Said poles be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed herewith, mark Massachusetts Electric Company and Verizon New England, Inc. Plan number... All right, Rick, this is a different plan number than...
I think you referenced the first one.
I represented the first one.
I think so. So if we, maybe we can just reference this one and do this one first.
No, I'm going to, yeah, I'm going, I'm going to go ahead. So we're, we have two petitions tonight. I read from the other plan, not this one. And does that, does that jive with what you have? That this is petition, the one I read from is 27898719?
Yeah, 19 is for Pole 114.
Okay.
His property is near the other.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to go, I'm going to continue on with 19.
Okay.
And also for permission to lay and maintain underground lateral cables and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purposes of making connections with such poles and buildings, as each of the said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. Petition agrees to reserve space, one arm cross, one cross arm at a suitable point at each of the said poles for fire, police, telephone, telegraph, signal wires belonging to the municipality, and used exclusively for municipal purposes. Okay, so with that said, again, its description is 144, Pole 89-84. Is there anybody here that would like to speak on that petition? Okay, if not, well, Mr. Chairman, you just read 119. Correct. Or 719.
719, okay.
Yeah, okay. All right, so why don't we let you explain that? Same, same issue, guy wire, guy wire and a tree?
Yeah, same, same situation. Yep, it's just, this is the, so this is the 719 one you want, was the second one?
Correct.
Okay, so 719 is, that's the Pole 114, okay.
Right.
So, yeah, that one was this one here. So, yeah, that one's very similar situation, removing a guy wire per the tree warden, installing a stub pole across the street for support.
Okay.
With a down anchor coming off of that. So it supports that new pole. That way, they can widen the roads, as they're looking to do.
Okay. Given it's a public hearing, there's nobody here to speak, I'll go to the members, see if they have any questions.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions or comments. I think this is a good thing, and if Chuck's asking for it to be done, I think as long as everything's good with the neighbors, then we should proceed.
The only question I have is, is this pole that affects Mr. Dean?
This one?
No.
That was the first. That was Pole 89.
Okay, so we haven't read that one yet.
No.
Okay.
So this one we're talking about now is work number that ends in 105? Is that correct?
No, we're talking about 719.
719.
719. Oh, 719, oh, okay, I thought we did that first, sorry. So that's Pole, yeah, Pole 114.
We haven't shifted gears yet.
Okay, so this is the next one.
Yeah.
So, no, yeah, he's in the next one.
Okay.
And I would second that.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. And it's been seconded, and I'll also vote in favor that's unanimous, and there's nobody here to speak. Go directly. Okay, next, Pole 89-84. And I'll see if I can get this one right, and sorry to confuse both of you. I think we've determined that it, it does not impact the gentleman here. So I'll read the public notice. Massachusetts Electric Company, Verizon New England, Inc. request permission to erect poles and maintain wires to be placed thereon and together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures. As said, companies may deem necessary to be owned and used in common by your petitioners in the following public ways. Beaver Street, Pole 89-84. National Grid requests per Chuck Renaud, Milford Town Tree Warden to remove tree guy from existing joint-owned Pole 89. Install 37 Northwest, 35 joint-owned stub pole with anchor to support existing Pole 89. And this is Plan Number 27569105. And I want to ask, just in case, because I think somebody may have come in since I asked the first time, but is anybody here seeking any questions or have any comments relative to this public hearing? I think you're, are you all set?
Yes.
With an understanding that it's 150, 200 feet down the road?
Yes, that's, that's okay.
Very good. Okay. And with nobody else here to speak, now, it's just a question, same issue, tree warden has requested a guy wire be removed from a tree?
Yes, same situation.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman. All right, I'll also make that unanimous. Thank you very much, and thank you for coming in and asking the question when you're not sure. That's the way to do it.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Absolutely.
Have a good night, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in. Okay, that concludes public hearings. Next, we have scheduled appointment for Ice Cream Ward LLC, doing business as Bertie's Creative Creamery, and the request for a common vitulum license. Is anybody here to represent that?
Welcome.
Great to see you.
Evening, guys.
Good evening.
Jim Collins.
Mr. Collins, great to see you. And it sounds like a creamery might be coming to Milford. Now, I understand this is the former Truffles location?
Yes.
Because people might know it from its previous...
That's how I describe it for people, when they say, "Where is it going to be?"
Where is it?
Everybody knows Truffles.
All right, can you tell us a little bit about your background in this business?
Background in this business? I've been making ice cream now for just about three years. So everything we make or sell, 90% of what we sell, is going to be made on grounds.
Okay, great.
So it's high-quality, premium ice cream, which means it's about 14% fat versus...
Good fat, though, right?
It's always good fat, isn't it? It's all what you add to it. So, yeah, I've been doing that about three years, but I've been in restaurants for over 35 years. The owner, Steve Ward, is kind of the silent partner, if you will, so I get to do all the fun stuff. So we're going to make some ice cream for you all, and hope you'll enjoy it. Got 43 flavors. So if there's something you like, ask, I can usually make it. And it's been kind of fun, so we're really looking forward to it, because this place gives us a lot more space than we currently have.
All right, so I'm going to do some pro forma things here.
Sure.
That we typically do with license applications. This is, again, an application for a new license for a common vitular. And the business name is Ice Cream Ward LLC, doing business as Bertie's Creative Creamery. The address is 198 East Main Street, Milford, Mass. Hours of operation, open seven days a week. Requesting 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. in summers, and winters will be very dependent. Is it within those hours?
It'll be less than those. So, yes.
But within the window?
Within that window.
What we actually seek is to understand is maximum hours that you might be open, so that we have an understanding of when we think you're closing, when you...
So during the summer, that's the maximum, is what you're seeing?
Okay.
During the winter...
There's no requirement for you to be open those hours in the winter? I'm just looking for the maximum window?
During the winter, or...
For the license.
For the license is what you see there.
Okay, so what we'll do is, we'll make the stipulation that's 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. for the purposes of the license. And as you said, Mr. Ward, your name is Stephen Ward, and you're from Needham, Mass. We have your mailing address and information. Now, I'm going to read department head review form. And some of this has changed since this was typed out last week, so I'm going to omit certain pieces. We've received other information that's dated correctly, updated. Building commissioner, no violations building, bathroom. Town planner, no change of use, no site plan required. Tax collector, my understanding is the outstanding real estate property tax of 8,786, 76 has been made whole to the town. So town treasurer, no existing liens. Fire chief, fire department has no issues at this time. Police chief, no issues or concerns. And this is just pending Board of Health approval. That's not been completed, that process has not been completed. So with that said, I'll go to the members of the board, see if they have any questions or comments. Will?
No, I don't have any questions. My only comment is, prior to Truffles, it was a creamery for years, so I think it's a good spot for it. So, no, that's great. Good luck.
Thank you.
Congratulations, and welcome to Milford.
Great, glad to be here.
Just to tease you, I can tell you enough from around here originally, you all...
It's been a bad habit.
Well, with that said, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the license application for the common vitular for Ice Cream Ward LLC.
And I would second that, Mr. Chairman. And I'll make that unanimous. And that's, that's just pending, obviously.
Board of Health.
Board of Health, still a big deal.
We're working on that part.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right.
Take care.
Great to meet you, and good luck. Next, we have town administrator's report. Rick?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just three items tonight. I just want to update the board on the records management implementation. King Information System has begun their work to implement the records management system at Town Hall. They have started to categorize all records at Town Hall, and will be advising us to any records which can be destroyed with state approval. The expectation is the project will require six weeks, we will take, to complete. He's made a substantial difference just in a week. It's going to be a good project, I believe. Two other items, just to update the board. The sale of land on Bowden Drive. We did receive sealed bids for offers to purchase this parcel. They were opened on April 29 by Town Treasurer Chris Pillar and Town Council Charles Body. Two bids were received. The higher of the two bids, $13,500, was submitted by Thomas Banks. It was accepted by the town, and Town Council will now prepare the required documents to complete the sale of the land within 30 days. And then in conjunction with that, we also had a sealed bid for offers for the land parcel 41-0-424, Granite Street Railroad Street. They also were opened on April 29 by Town Treasurer Chris Pillar and Town Council Charles Body. Only one bid was received. The bid was in the amount of $5,000 by Milford Club LLC. This also was accepted. Town Council will again prepare the required documents to complete the sale of the land within 30 days. So both sealed bids were completed as per request by the Board of Selectmen.
Okay, any additional votes required by the board?
No, no, just more an update for, for this board.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you. That's all I have tonight.
All right, outstanding. Next, we have discussion interim police chief. It's a carryover from last meeting. I know we had a question about what could be done, couldn't be done, and that was answered by Charles Body. I wanted to see where the board members wanted to go tonight. Is there any, any thing you'd like to bring up?
Yes, please. No, at the last Board of Selectmen meeting, I spoke about former interim chief Michael Pagetti, serving once again in that capacity beginning July 1. Mr. Walsh had inquired about a regulation regarding Mike's status as a retiree and his ability to serve. Unfortunately, it was only, with all due respect, he was only citing half the regulation. So former interim chief Mike Pagetti can serve and remains interested in serving in that position. Once again, so with that said, I'm just going to come right out. I'm going to make a motion to appoint Michael Pagetti interim police chief to begin no later than July 1, 2019, and that the Board of Selectmen go into direct negotiations with Mike as soon as possible in order to have a contract in place in advance of July 1, 2019.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second? Mr. Chairman, can I open it up for discussion, please? Yeah, if you want a second for discussion, I'd be happy to... Second for discussion, please. And, and all due respect to Selectmen Kincaid, what is the title that you want to give the interim chief?
Well, at this point, I made a motion to appoint him interim chief, so...
So that would be part-time chief?
No, that would be, that would be going into negotiations to appoint him interim chief, yes.
Okay, so just so you know, when you accuse me of being wrong in the statute...
No, I didn't say you were wrong. I said you cited half the regulation.
Nobody accusing anybody of anything. He must comply with training academy requirements as a matter of law.
Mm-hmm.
Must comply with requirements of the retirement law and reimbursement of the
Must comply with requirements of the retirement law and reimbursement of the retirement system, general law, section 32.
Yep.
And I have copies, if anybody would like to see these.
No, I've got copies from Charles in telling us what he needs to comply with. We've got legal opinion on it, so we understand, I think we understand each of us have been provided...
We have legal opinion, opinion.
Mike, he's your appointee, so do you have any questions for Charles? Did you meet with Charles?
Did I meet with him? Hasn't even called me.
Should he have?
Yeah, he sent a memo out on a Monday morning to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay. All right, I think, Rick, you sent the note out letting us know that we had any questions, we could have that discussion with Charles. Okay, so there's a motion, there's a second.
Discussion, not a second to approve, second for discussion.
Okay, so now I'll, now I'll take a vote? Is there, all those in favor of appointing, based on the motion, appointing Mike Pagetti interim police chief?
Aye.
Opposed.
Okay, I'll vote in favor, that's, the vote is two, two to one. Next item for new business is the Fourth of July Committee Acceptance of a Gift. And it's actually a total of $600. Montgomery Lodge made a donation, a Step in Time Preschool, and Doyle Siding, Inc. Doyle Siding made a donation of $500 to the Fourth of July Parade Committee. Is there a motion?
A motion to accept.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman. I would also vote in favor.
And Rick, just for a, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, just for a matter of formality, I'm sure, is, is the town sending out thank you notes to these folks?
Yes, we always send...
Or is it coming from the committee itself?
The committee may do it, but we do it also.
Oh, you do? Okay, great.
We typically do, yeah, just...
All right. Next we have Milford Fire Local 2140, requesting a toll road, mass toll, I'm sorry, toll road from 9 to 12 September 7th, 2019, in its main and winter, Spruce Street and Jefferson and main.
Make a motion to approve?
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
I would also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next we have Milford Youth Council, surplus property. The youth council, or the youth center has made a request that the board declare items of surplus. They include printers, monitors, desk organizers, binding machines, bats, balls, gloves, miscellaneous board games, holiday decorations, and they require a vote by the Board of Selectmen.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman.
I would also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next, we have designated, or designate appointment requirement annually for the MWRTA Advisory Board. Members have had an opportunity to read this, is there any motions or comments from the board? Will?
Mr. Chairman, I enjoy sitting on that board. It's a good group, we're doing a lot of good work. Ed Carr is a great administrator. I'll be happy to serve as the designate if it's the pleasure of the chairman and the board, and if someone else wants to do it, that's, that's, that's fine, too.
Mr. Chairman, I feel because Selectman Kincaid has been doing that for a while, and he's been doing a good job, that I would second their motion as well.
Yeah, and for me, it's got less to do, because I've served it before, it's got less to do with, you know, continuation of what we've done before, but, you know, in this case, Will seems uniquely suited for this particular task, given his background with state transportation, and I would agree with you. So for that, for that, I would also, I think it's a consensus of the board, why don't we take, go ahead and take a motion? Mike, do you have a motion?
I thought Will gave the motion.
No, he didn't.
Oh, I'm sorry, I would make a motion to allow Will to continue to serve on the MWRTA Advisory Board membership.
Okay, representing the town of Milford. I'd second that. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. You're very welcome. Next we have acceptance of a gift, the fire department from Benjamin Moore, 49 Sumner Street, for the amount of $2,500 for equipment, supplies, and training for the fire department.
Motion to accept.
And before I second that, Mr. Chairman, if I may say, and I've always said this, this is another example of how kind Benjamin Moore is to this community all the time. They've been very good to the youth center, and they continue to be very good to this community.
I agree.
I will second that, and that's unanimous. Next we have for the fire department from Ronald and Linda Jenks, 110 Beaver Street, equipment supplies and training in the amount of $50. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept.
I would second that, Mr. Chairman. And I would also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next we have a letter from the Milford Town Library, Susan Edmunds Library Director, requesting that, well, it doesn't request anything in the letter, but the requesting to waive permit fees associated with the building and replacement of the stairs.
Make a motion to waive the permit fees for the stair project?
Second that, Mr. Chairman.
I would vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next we have Milford Department of Veteran Services Parade Permit. As always, the Milford Department of Veteran Services under the direction of John Pillar requests that they conduct the annual Memorial Day Parade. It's going to push off Monday, May 27th, 9:30 a.m. Assembly will be a new location besides the IHOP restaurant. Let's see, to Calzone Park, up Main Street, to Draper Park for a speaking program.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the permit to obstruct a public way for the Milford Department of Veteran Services Parade.
And I would second that, Mr. Chairman, as well.
And I would also, great, great event, and hope folks can make it in support of our veterans. That's unanimous. Next we have chorus...
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
I was going to say both of us.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mike.
As you know, several months ago, this board took action on a particular person serving on a board at the time, was serving as chairman, and I'll come right out and say, was chairman of the personnel board for not living in the town of Milford. It has come to my attention that our current chairman of the personnel board has sold his home and is not living in the town of Milford. And I'd like to know, in fairness, in fairness, because the former chairman did prove legal residence to us, and the three of us were on the board at the time, I'd like to know what this board wants to do with the situation that we have going on now with the current chairman, because if we're going to be consistent, we have to be consistent.
What would you like to do?
I'd like the current chairman to show us proof of residence in the town of Milford.
My understanding is there's no requirement of that, but why don't we do this? Why don't we, why don't we have it, have it reviewed by Charles Body, who's got a fair amount of experience in this space, having dealt with the prior issue, and see if there's anything that should or needs to be done? Why don't we do this also, given you raised the concern, why don't we have you, if you could speak with Charles Body about your concerns, that would be helpful. That way he can take all of those into consideration before he comes up with guidance on it. Does that work for you?
As you was chairman, what would you like to see?
I've already been through this process, I have no great desire to go back through it, so I don't have any particular stand on it one way or the other regarding where people live and their appointments on boards and committees.
Mr. Chairman...
Unless there's a stipulation within that, within that, within that town meeting article for appointment to those boards that has some specific language.
No, Mr. Chairman, I'll just add that I, I think, Mike, if you guys want to follow through that, we've already learned, and in part of the, with Mr. Carroll, him proving whether or not he had residency actually ended up not being a matter, because we don't have residence requirements, as we found out, that's what that whole court issue was and what came about it, wasn't the fact that, if you go back and read through that paperwork, it wasn't the fact that he proved he lived in Milford or not, it was that in the town bylaws, in Milford, we learned that we don't have a residency requirement. I agree with you, you should live in town and serve, but as we got proven wrong, that is not in our bylaws. It should be, probably, and that's something that, that was the decision of the town council and the other attorneys. Mr. Warren Heller was, we don't have that requirement, so, and they were right, so I certainly don't have to go down that road again either.
No, I've been down that path.
But Charles can pull that decision up and provide it to us again.
Sure, I'll bring it up in old business next meeting. Yeah, it'd be helpful if you spoke with Charles as well.
Mr. Chairman, I do have new business as well. No, I'm still on new business.
Oh, okay.
I just have an item of new business. If I can direct this to Rick. Rick, can we get an update on the status of the, of the locker rooms at the Milford Police Department? Ever since the sewage backup, I am under the impression, based on someone that I bumped into on the street a few days ago, that those carpets or flooring hasn't been replaced, so it's still down to the bare concrete.
I don't believe it has, correct?
Okay, yeah, and I don't know if there's a financing issue, but, you know, the ladies and gentlemen deserve to...
I'll get an update.
Okay, they're changing in there and getting out of the shower and then stepping on that floor, which I'm sure has been cleaned, but it hasn't been replaced.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and Mike, anything under new or old business?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, if I could back you up to old business for a second. As the three of us know, back in January, town council, I'm sorry, former town council, Jerry Moody, sent us a letter, and if I may, Mr. Chairman, could I read it?
Sure.
Okay. It's dated January 4th, I was chairman at the time. Dear Mr. Walsh, as I think you are aware, since my retirement as town council in March of 2018, I have continued to serve as part-time labor council for the Milford School Committee pursuant to General Law 71. I have also served the Zoning Board of Appeals on a very part-time basis as their chapter 40B coordinator. I expect the services as labor council to go on until the school committee decides that it should make a change. As to the 40B coordinator functions, they are largely complete with the approval of three 40B projects this past year. There will be times when I will ask by the Zoning Board of Appeals to undertake review and analysis of submissions prior to construction, but I do not anticipate that will entail much more than 20 hours per year paid from funds supplied by the developers. My time with the school committee is estimated by the school committee and myself for purposes of our stipend agreement at approximately 75 hours per year. I'm writing this to ask that your board consider classifying these two positions, school committee labor council and zoning board of appeals 40B coordinator, as special municipal employee positions. This classification would be made pursuant of General Law Section 268a, which allows the Board of Selectmen to classify positions as special. Back in 1966, the then-board classified the vast majority of the part-time volunteer or low-hour compensated positions as special municipal employees. This was updated in 1996, when a number of new positions were added to the classification and has been updated periodically on a position-by-position basis as it, as they have come into being. Under the law, which is contained in General Law 286a, positions may be classified for special municipal employee status when a position is one for which no compensation is provided, or is one in which the employee does not earn compensation as a municipal employee for an aggregate aggregated of no more than 800 hours during the 365 days of the year. In the case of either position, or together, they do not even come close to that mark, it would not come close in any particular year in the future. The reason for my requesting this classification, as was done some years ago for the part-time general government labor council position, is the possibility that in the future, I might have a need or desire to represent parties before town boards or agencies other than those employing me as special counsel. To do that, I would need this classification. At the current time, I do have, I do not have any parties I am representing before any town boards or agencies, but I do anticipate it could happen in the future, and it would be best for every one perspective to ask your board to classify these positions as special municipal employee at this time. That was a letter that was sent to us in January, and I apologize, I was chairman of the board at the time, but I'd like to make a motion tonight to the Board of Selectmen that we accept attorney, former town council attorney Jerry Moody's request to move forward on his recommendation.
Okay. At the time, Rick, and help me with my memory, we had asked...
Yes, let me...
Charles to look at it.
We did.
Charles put out a memo.
Yeah, he did weigh in on it. I believe it's his recommendation that you would so classify.
I, I agree, I agree with that, yeah. So we've, we, yeah, we've since gotten the clarity that we needed. When was that dated?
Charles's letter was dated April 9th.
Yeah, so it was dated last month.
Yep.
So, so we did get clarity. So you want to read your motion, or?
I would make a motion that we allow attorney Jerry Moody to serve in the capacity that he would like to, as I wrote it out here. I move that the board vote to classify the position of school department labor council and zoning board chapter 40B coordinator as special municipal employees under General Law's chapter 268a.
Yeah, and Charles gave a good update on that last week.
Yeah, that's a no-brainer, I'll gladly second that.
I would vote in favor as well, and that's unanimous.
Thank you.
All right. If there's not any other old business or new business, any correspondence?
Sorry that I made you back up.
No, no, no worries. Any correspondence? All right, not hearing any. We do have an executive session tonight, it's to discuss Town Hall Clerical Workers Union Grievance.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
I would second that. I would also vote affirmative, that's unanimous. Now I'll ask for roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All of us voting in favor to go into executive session to discuss union grievance, we will not be returning to open session. Thank you very much, and good evening.